Will come to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting, please be aware of the fire exit which is to your left of the room, in the event of emergency, please move in a calm order and please do not take the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items on the agenda in the order that they appear, there's extra agendas at the door. Planning board, if the case is being called, the applicant or their representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself and give and present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant, if this case is a public hearing, of which the first one is not, correct?
Correct.
Okay. It will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application will come to the podium. Once all public input has been completed, representatives will be given an opportunity to respond. Once, and that's it, no further input is allowed after that point. And with that, Michelle, will you call the first case, please?
I think we need to make a little clarification because I believe the public input was closed at the May meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was asking while I was doing it.
It was closed.
It's closed.
Okay.
Is the other one going to be a public meeting?
No.
No. That's just a referral. Okay. There is no public meeting tonight, so it's just, just you.
Okay. So, the first item on the agenda is a tabled item, it's case number PB 1905-1, upon the matter of request by Costage Engineering, acting as agent for Guggenheim Development Services LLC, for preliminary final site plan approval to demolish the existing building and construct a new plus or minus 3,134 square foot Jiffy Lube building with associated site improvements on premises 1268 East Ridge Road and a portion of tax ID 091.08-2-51.1 in a C business district.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we move from the table PB 1905-1?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, you have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
All set?
Yep.
Good evening, my name is Garth Wintercorn, I work with Costage Engineering. With me tonight is John Marth from Guggenheim Development Services LLC, who's the applicant, and Steve Isom, who's with Stonebrier Auto Services LLC. Steve came in tonight to ask any maybe specific questions that the board members still may have regarding services or the operation of the proposed Jiffy Lube over here, as you all know, for our site plan approval. We have been granted a variance from the zoning board of appeals for the front setback. We've also obtained our approvals from the town board for the special use permit. Based on input from meeting with staff, the town engineer from La Bella, the board members here at the previous public hearing and at the workshop meetings, we've updated the site plan and the landscape plan, which you guys should have received last week, along with a summary letter of plan updates, which basically list in detail the changes that have really been made to the plans from the original planning board application to where we are today. And we also updated what we're calling the customer trip generation slash gap data. We added additional projected vehicles to the Jiffy Lube to include all ancillary services and not just the express oil changes. In addition on that, on the memo, we also added trip generations based on the ITE Trip Generation Manual, which I heard at the workshop meeting has been asked of other applicants and that was added per that request. We also has received two letters from Mike Chafron from La Bella. The first letter was a summary of a meeting that I had with Carrie and Mike on the updated site plan, after we had shifted dumpster enclosure from this corner over, which allowed us to move the building back. And when we did that...
Hey, Garth.
Sir. Bad habit. It's okay. We were able to move the exit drive from the service bays back further from Ridge Road. And the advantage that gives us, it really provides a lot more room in this intersection for cars coming off Ridge Road and making a left in Aspen Dental. And it really improves the line of sight for vehicles exiting the service bays to see these cars entering from Ridge Road. We thought that was a very, a very positive change. In addition to those changes, if you'd like, I go through all the bullet points that I had in my summary change letter?
If you could, and point them out on the map, if you can do it.
So, I already talked about the dumpster. At the workshop meeting, there was a concern raised by a couple of the members, that what's to stop a vehicle coming off of East Ridge to mistakenly look at this driveway cut, to say, mistake it for an entrance? I think some good suggestions came up at the workshop meeting. One of them was to narrow it, which we've done, I believe, from 18 feet to 13 feet. Another one was to tighten this radius, so that turning movement would not be nearly as easy as it was shown on the last plan. And the third one was to add a do not enter sign facing kind of southwest, kind of at an angle towards the Aspen Dental site and East Ridge Road. We've also added some, a painted skip line. I think that that will even further encourage any vehicles coming off of Ridge Road to bear left and not mistake Jiffy Lube for an entrance. So, I think we've done a good job at really making it clear that that's an exit only and not an entrance. Out there today, there's really no striping per se at all at the intersection with what is now the existing home, the existing site to the west and the exit to Ridge Road. We've added a stop bar lettering, a stop sign and a double yellow for the exit approach, eastbound exit approach from Aspen Dental, and that's going to really keep people who are exiting the site to the south and maintain room for the lefts in to the Aspen Dental site. We've also added the do not block intersection and stop signs for the Jiffy Lube exit, as well as a stop bar and stop lettering there. We further delineated the pedestrian crosswalk from East Ridge to the office portion of the Jiffy Lube building with a colored stamped concrete, which is now shown and labeled on the, on the current site plan. We've done and submitted exhibits in the past that clearly show that, you know, if vehicles were exiting Jiffy Lube and we're sitting here at this stop bar waiting to get East Ridge Road with the changes made and the additional room we provided in this intersection, worst case scenario, if two cars, even 20-foot vehicles were queued at this stop sign, there's still plenty of room for a vehicle to head to the one-way northbound lane, head north and be able to make a left in here to clear the intersection again. And all of this is really going to prevent any cars from ever sitting here with nowhere to go and potentially backing up on the East Ridge Road, which is really what we don't want to happen. I think I pointed it out, but I'll reiterate at that, at the beginning of the process when we had our pre-application meeting with Carrie and staff, they asked us to submit the plans to the Monroe County DOT, which has jurisdiction over East Ridge Road, to get comments on the driveway. They came back with no concerns about the circulation or the volumes, the volumes are much lower than what the county would ever see as a threshold to look into that further. Their, their only concern, I guess has happened in the past, was that we had to know to make sure that if and when this goes to construction, that none of the construction employees would park their cars on East Ridge Road and count it off. So, apparently that, that has happened in the past, we assured them that would not happen with this project. So, the two letters from La Bella kind of reiterated a lot of what I just went over. And I think the summaries of these letters are very positive.
Eric, can I stop you? Was that the entire, all the bullet points that you wanted to present to us?
They're all summarized in my June 19th letter.
Okay, I'm just asking if that's all you wanted to summarize to us right now?
I missed a couple.
There's a whole second page, but who's counting?
Let me keep going then. In addition, we added a gore striped diamond, which is just paint for the exit on East Ridge Road. Again, this is for vehicles exiting Jiffy Lube or the Aspen Dental, to keep them over to the west. And again, that is to provide clear access for vehicles entering from East Ridge. On the second page, this radius on the north side of the exit drive out of Jiffy Lube used to be a little tighter, we've increased this radius right here. Again, that just provides more room to clear traverse the intersection and it really strengthens it if cars ever do queue here, that there is a clear path to this one-way northbound lane. And I believe one of the prior exhibits that we submitted, the traffic exhibits, showed two 16-foot cars, which are more typical, like a sedan showing, I believe it was like 20 something feet of, of room for a car to make that maneuver. Or a worst case, two 20-foot larger, longer trucks or vehicles, and there was almost, I think there was slightly over 15-foot of room, again, to access this northbound lane if that situation ever occurred. Designated, it was concerned about snow storage, so moving this dumpster back provided a lot more green space between East Ridge Road and namely, the sidewalk along East Ridge Road and the exit area out of the service bays, so that gave us more snow storage area for the front of the site. And a suggestion was made, which we agree with, that we could use the northern portion of the employee parking lot, showing here is additional snow storage. We showed a certain amount of parking spaces to meet or exceed code. Specifically, we show 12 back here, where the maximum employees shift for Jiffy Lube on Saturdays is typically eight. So, that leaves quite a bit of extra room for snow storage in the rear. There was a concern at the workshop meeting about the slopes in back here, and, you know, could we do anything to, to make it safer? I'd like to reiterate that we do have two proposed light poles, so this area will be lit at night. And versus the typical six-inch reveal curb, the reveal being the height of the curb above the pavement, we've increased that to seven inch. So, if a car ever did keep going, I don't know how else to put it, the larger, higher curb would act as a curb stop and keep them from leaving, leaving the pavement. I touched on this colored stamped concrete sidewalk, the landscape plan. The increased green space allowed us to shift the landscaping further north off, off the sidewalk on East Ridge Road, and to provide snow storage area for the town sidewalk plows, as well as more room for plowing operations for the exit to Jiffy Lube. There was concerns in one of the La Bella comment letters that one of the landscape shrubs or plants that we called out, I think Barry Holly was not as hardy a plant as we could have picked to withstand, you know, the snow conditions that we anticipate here as well as salting. So, we replaced the Holly with the Green Mountain Boxwood. Or, I'm sorry, I got that reversed, we're proposing the Holly to substitute for the Green Mountain Boxwood. Our LAs in the office who prepared the plans are saying it's a much more hardy and salt resistant plant. In the back, another La Bella comment was to please provide some jute mesh or an anchoring method, so when, on these slopes, so when you're done with your grading, you place your topsoil, you place, place your seed, then you anchor it down with a jute mesh, which will keep everything tight and in place until the grass takes. And it won't just keep eroding and, and cause a problem there. We looked at those discussions at the planning board workshop meeting, they wanted some more discussion verbiage on the alternate layouts. So, we looked at, if you guys recall, I think at the la, at the public hearing, the last meeting, an alternate site plan where we would have the northbound one-way lane actually be, or it actually goes south, where the vehicles would exit this way instead of entering. An exhibit showed that when two cars were here, with this being a one-way that, that vehicles entering from East Ridge Road would not be able to utilize to clear the intersection, that a car would be stranded, quote unquote, stuck here. So, having this the one-way northbound, it's just another method, another assurance that there is the ability to clear the intersection in any worst case scenario. There was talk about, could we rotate the building 90 degrees? So, the long way was in a north-south orientation versus being parallel to East Ridge Road to get the, the required stacking and then the required turning radiuses for vehicles entering. At a minimum, we would need a lot width this way to be 130 feet. Right now, we have, just due to the configuration of the lot, the lot line was set right along this existing curb line, so the Aspen Dental parking that is right here will stay, and that's, that's part of the agreement with a, with a current property order. There was also talk about shifting the building over here to the, to the west, and then we could still have the vehicles exit this way, and could we, for vehicles entering Jiffy Lube, instead of going around the back like they are now, would be to go this way and we really discourage that because, you know, vehicles, exiting vehicles entering would be going head on towards each other and there's no way we would oppose that. We got in at the workshop a little bit about the building signage, oh, I got a clarification from Steve. Questions, a couple of questions arose, one of them being, the south elevation that faces East Ridge Road, which is this sign right here, would the entire sign be illuminated at night? And the answer is no, it would just be a circular JL logo in the Jiffy Lube lettering. The rest of the sign would not be lit. There was another question, could you provide us with the LED lighting that proposed Kelvins? We have summarized and inherit, they're 7100 Kelvin. It is a warm light, but it's part of the housing, it's, it's behind the light and it's interior backlit. And I talked with our lighting guy, he says, "That's a warm light, but it's going to produce a nice, uniform, bright white light." And he said, "The actual folk candles, which are based on the lumens," again, we pulled this from the manufacturer specs, "would be equivalent to a half-foot candle, which is really not bright." So, it's a white light, it's a warm light, but it's not a blinding bright light. That summarizes the changes in my plan update letter. Again, to summarize changes to the trip generation gap data memo, for the projected vehicles for Jiffy Lube, from year one to year five, we added additional vehicles. A question was asked, does this table on the trips that you're showing here include all the services and not just the express loops? So, those numbers went up slightly, year one by two to year five by additional five vehicles. They would be going in specifically for services different than just the express loop. We were also asked to add trip generations based off the IT Trip Generation Manual, which we've done. That gives you for the Saturday and then for the weekday peak hour, which is where the Jiffy Lubes expect their peak hourly customers to, to be at the site. 14 vehicles on a Saturday and 10 vehicles on a weekday afternoon, when they're driving home between four and six of the peak. So, the 14 vehicles, for instance, that's one car would be 4.3 minutes. For the Monday through Friday, the 10 vehicles, that would equate to one vehicle every six minutes. And it was confirmed again with Steve that, I think is a, is a really important factor, that the operations of the Jiffy Lube, they only have one checkout station, one cashier. So, the vehicles are going to be, customers are going to be checking out one at a time, and that's naturally going to provide gaps in the vehicles leaving, leaving the store. So, it really makes the ITE trip hourly numbers seem very realistic to me, and they, you know, they seem, you know, relative to other uses per se that could be allowed in this zoning district. I think the, the volumes are relatively low. The La Bella June 17th letter that talked about the different alternative site plans as well, looked at three of them, and they based their review on looking at six bullets, you know, vehicular and pedestrian access to and from the site, and put it on a point system where minus one, they have as an inadequate aspect of the layout, one being an adequate layout, or adequate, adequate aspect of the layout, and two being a very positive aspect to our proposed layout. The two alternatives that we're not proposing tonight, that La Bella and I had talked about at our meeting at the town, came up with eight points, where they gave our alternative site plan a value of 13 points. And in summary in their letter, saying that the current site plan is substantially better than the other alternatives, one and two that we looked at. In La Bella's June 7th letter, I've touched on a lot of the things that Mike listed here, they're repetitive from my, from my summary letter. But, near the, near the end of his letter, he's saying, with these, I'm just quoting, I'm reading the letter, "With these improvements in traffic weights, rates, we do not anticipate a significant congestion at the site, and if one occurred, it should be readily cleared." Again, so we, we appreciate the input from staff, from the board, from the town engineer, and we think we've updated the plans to, to address all the comments and suggestions that we've gotten to date. And if there's any other questions or I can answer, or possibly Steve or John here, they might be able to answer as well.
Thank you. Thank you for participating in the workshop and addressing all those points.
Some good points came up.
With that, is there any questions?
Garth, you have a monument sign listed on the plans you've submitted to us tonight. Is that something that you're planning on putting in and asking for approval for this evening?
We'd like to, if, if we, that could be part of the approvals, we'd like to, maybe you could condition that on coming back with details, because we have not provided the board with any details of that, so.
Okay.
If the lack of details is an issue, we'll have to come back.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Richards?
Sure. 71,000 Kelvin seem, or 7100 Kelvin seems to be excessive, 71,000 would be even more excessive, but that seems excessive. Normally, what we've been allowing is 35,000 to 4,000 Kelvin on most projects that we've been asking, just because it starts to interfere with migrating patterns on the whiteness.
Okay. So, here's the, here's the specs, what the LED lighting that they're proposing for the building on its side is a GE.
I'm talking about the whiteness, I understand what you're telling me and I understand all of that.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Steve, you may want to talk to this, but the Kelvin levels for the specific GE light, which is, which is a Tetra Max white light, has two options, one is a 7,100 K and another is a 5,000 K light. So, I, I think we could reduce it to the 5,000, if that would help?
Well, I, I'm all about reducing it to 4,000 and coming up with another vendor.
I think we're good, I think these guys are saying we'll do that.
All right. Good. I appreciate that. Can somebody talk to me about that stop line on the north side of the Aspen property, please? What's that for now?
This right here. It's just so...
Where are those cars going?
They would, they could either come in here to the service bays, so the stop sign is there. Typically, when we, when we lay out traffic control, whether it be signage or stripage, we always give right of way to the vehicles leaving the public road.
I understand that, so you intend on cars to come off of Portland Avenue then into the, for the service?
Yes, it's...
And what's going to stop somebody from turning left, or turning right?
I think that would probably be another, another sign we'd have to be there.
Apparently nothing though, right? So, we're going to have to add a condition here.
Okay.
All right. I'm real uncomfortable with that entrance on the south side of Aspen. I'm almost thinking that we should send everybody north and then send them back around into the Aspen parking lot, either they can go right into Jiffy Lube or left into Aspen Well Care. That would eliminate that cross traffic off of the Aspen altogether. It's just a suggestion, I'm not asking for you to answer anything, I'm presenting this to the, my fellow board members.
Could you explain it again?
Yeah, detail edit.
The, on the south side, there's an entrance and exit in and out of the Aspen Well Now property. If we got rid of that entrance and forced all the cars north and had them turn into the Well Now Aspen property on the north entrance exit, or they can go into the Jiffy Lube that they would, that we're sending them now, that would, I'm just putting it out there.
We talked about that at workshop, but I think that we decided that we couldn't do that because of the way that we had previously, like, approved the Aspen Dental and the Well Now, because it would be changing, it would be changing their site plan.
I'm not sure how it changes their site.
There's also an access agreement.
There's also an access agreement in place between these two parcels.
But we're obviously doing something here because if there's two cars stacked, they're going to go back that way and enter Aspen Well Now. So there's got to be some sort of an agreement going on here, right?
No, no. What I'm saying though, is that the directing the traffic to only one of the locations, I don't know if that affects their agreement between the two parcels. So the board should just be mindful that if there's an illegal agreement in place between the two parcels, this board shouldn't do anything that alters that.
And I guess I would want to know if there is that agreement that exists.
Okay.
Um. And I. There currently is riprap on the north slope of the back parking lot that I'll just term as, um, employee parking. Is that going to stay riprap or what are you guys doing with that? You're going to remove it and put this other soil down?
Yeah, where the, where the pipe just charges now.
Yep.
We're maintaining that pattern. We're actually going to put new riprap down, new stone down.
Okay, so we won't be doing the seating in the north portion of that?
No, we will. The entire portion will just be the small area right by the pipe and section where it discharges.
Do you have the dimensions on that?
The, the width of it?
Yeah, is it going to be a six foot drain?
We usually, oh, that's a six inch pipe drain in it.
Okay.
Um, so the geo, we had a geotech as part of the Guggenheim's due diligence for the site go out. And Easter Ridge, we've done some sites along Easter Ridge in the past and have found that the soils to be, um, more of a, a sandy material. That are prone to infiltration. That turned out to be true. So we're for the, for the more frequent storms, the zero and the tenure. All the, all the runoff, which will be collected from the new pavement areas and from the roof will go into perforated pipes in the back. And stone beds and soaking to the ground.
But it's going to be a six inch pipe that would, great. All right. And I know there's something else with there, but I can't think of it right now. I bet Mary will help me with that.
In the back?
Yeah. I'm done, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Well, I'm still, I'm still concerned about the drop off in the back. Um, seven inches might stop a vehicle, yeah, but if it's going fast enough, it's not gonna. And you gotta worry about sliding on ice and hitting it.
So a, a couple of things in back. Again, it's, it's, it's just for employee parking, so vehicles will be going slow. It will be lit at night and as part of the drainage system and the grading, although it's not, you know, a big slope like this. But the pavement is sloped from the curbs in towards the center of the pavement. And that's to force the, the runoff into the new catch basins and into our infiltration system. And so I think with a higher reveal curb and the grades and the lighting. The fact that vehicles will be going slow because it's employee parking only, we're, we're comfortable from our end.
Okay, Michael?
Yep.
Um, I have a question about the lighting. So on, um, the third page of the letter, it says the, only the Jiffy Lube circle logo and lettering will be lit at night. On the south elevation sign indicated above the garage door. Does your intent to have that illuminated overnight or?
They have to be, uh, the applicant's agree to have the building signage off one hour before opening and two hours after.
Hours after. Perfect. Okay. Um, the second thing is the, um, we talked about the dumpster enclosure at workshop. And our suggestion was to have the, uh, cinder block split face. And I was looking at the most recent, um, drawing that we have of that, which I believe is the original drawing. That's not called out on it, so I just wanted to confirm that with you. Um.
I'm sorry Bradley, what, what was that?
The dumpster enclosure, um, to be made out of split face, um, concrete block instead of just standard. Um. Signage, um, Mike got the thing about the, um. Monument sign, so that'll come back if there's any, if you want to do that. Um, and then the other, the, the last question I have is if you could just, um, give a little bit of more background on the trip counts. So when I look at the additional information that you provided, I see, I looked at year three because that seemed to be about the middle. So you're saying thirty-nine cars in and out on the same day, um, in year three. Then I looked at the ITE trip generation manual numbers, which seem, I know that these are peak hours, right?
Yeah, that's all they gave. They don't, they didn't get into daily.
Okay, so, um, according to this, or according to the ITE trip generation manual, when I compare them to the, um, daily numbers that you have up here. That would mean that about thirty-five percent of your traffic is coming through in one hour. Um, does that, that, I, the point I'm trying to get at is that.
It's based on the manual. That's, our numbers are based on.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get away from is I would rather have a, I don't, I, I would rather see them come out of a manual because.
Okay.
You know, it, it could be biased, you know, so.
Again, they, they don't have a daily trips.
I understand. What was the, um, code that you looked up and what was the description for the table that you used?
The, uh, the variable used to come up with these trip numbers is a number of service base.
Okay, and what did they, what was the category like, um, you know, was it? But what did they call this that you looked up in there? I've noticed that in a lot of times that makes a big difference in terms of the numbers that are generated.
There's sections that we've based on.
Quick lubrication vehicle shop. Quick lubrication vehicle shop is a business where the primary activity is to perform oil change services for vehicles. Other ancillary services, uh, may include preventative maces such as fluid and oil filter changes. Perfect. Makes a lot of sense. Okay, those are all my questions.
Um, just like to go back one thing, uh, Mary?
Yes, sir.
With a seven inch curb, if you're still uncomfortable. You, you want us to maybe add a Ballard or guard rail or something? I'd be, I'd, we'd be willing to do that.
I guess. My thought is, is I'm, I'm currently, um, with the local fire department. And we've gone to places that we thought would never be to. And this is exactly what we would be doing is if we go there and a car has gone, if a kid gets in a car and hits the accelerator, there's dumb parents out there. Or if an older person hits the accelerator and they don't have, can't get the brake, they're going to fly over there. Unless those trees are all, if those trees are all cut, left up there that are down there in the end anyway, that's going to stop the vehicle, but it's going to be very difficult.
I think, um, if there's that concern, we'd rather err on the side of safety.
I would. I, I, I'd be willing to bet the insurance company's going to say something about it too.
So Mary, would you rather see Ballards or guard rail or?
I want to see something safe that'll stop the vehicles.
Ballard or guard rail?
Your suggestion.
Would it twelve?
Ballards would be less intrusive, a guard rail, but I mean, it is in back, so your, your preference really.
From what you've seen in your others, what?
I think either one would be effective in stopping a car.
Go with the Ballard.
So I just wanted to say again, I think, um, you had a challenge and I think you have met the challenge. Um, so I'm, I'm pleased with the changes I've seen that you brought forward. Um, Alan, I was looking at the turn thing and I thought we talked about that at the workshop too. I personally, I'm, I'm okay with the way it is. I know you said you want to see something.
I'm just asking for the agreement, that's all. Somebody's telling me that they can't do it because of an agreement. I'm great if that's what it says, we'll go along with that. But if not, I think it would alleviate the cross traffic problem in any of the cars that are lining up if we get two or three over there.
So that's why I wanted to see how the rest, you asked how the rest of the board felt. I, I was just sharing.
Great.
I, I know we discussed at the workshop, I'm okay with it, so I, I'm outside of, I don't know, Mike, how do you feel about that?
Here's my question, Alan. You're saying you just closed it off completely, right?
I'm, I'm, it would be exit traffic only out of.
Be exit traffic only.
So there would no longer be an entrance to the, the entrance would exist the same way as it would. You'd drive toward the north and then you would either go right to go to Jiffy Lube or left to go to Well Now Aspen property. So if there was any traffic rate there, nobody would stop to wait for the traffic. We've all been to Wegmans and at, um, Ridge Road, right, in Culver? You know that first lane of parking lot? When the traffic starts backing up, you're going clear back to the end of the property to turn in so you can find a parking spot. That's what this would eliminate is there's no longer access to that parking. You're going to, everybody's going to go to the back, do the same thing. Nobody's going to stop and wait for traffic to clear because they think that, oh, it's going to clear in a minute, but they've got traffic blocked on Ridge Road. That's what I'm thinking.
My comment is my, my, and for me personally, my concern for the cross traffic and, and where people are going to get hung up. Is someone coming out of Jiffy Lube and being across the entire entrance, so no one could go anywhere.
Right.
Right now, if you get two cars, although it'll block that front entrance there, they can still on their own go to the back of the property. And do what you do at Wegmans. So they have that option right now. I think closing that off just eliminates another option, but it doesn't fix the main cross traffic.
I, yeah, I'm not trying to fix that problem with this solution. What I'm trying to do is create a solution for a problem before it begins. And I just see somebody sitting there waiting and then you're also stopping that cross traffic. Right? If I've got a.
Yeah, yeah.
If I've got cars, three cars lined up here and somebody pulls in off of Ridge Road to turn into Well Now Aspen, they see that. They're not necessarily looking at those identifier signs to get them back to the back. They're thinking, I'm going to turn right here because that's where it looks like I'm going to turn and I'll wait till it's clear. And I'm not saying it's going to happen all the time. I'm just saying that this would alleviate that problem. And I see that problem right now at the Dunkin' Donut. I see cars blocking the southbound lane.
I, I don't think that you're wrong. I just don't think that we have that option available to us.
That's what I want to find out.
Yeah, it's, 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 the property's not under, uh, the applicant's control.
So.
So how are you?
Well, I want to hear the rest of the board. I.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just saying, we discussed it at workshop. I don't think we were strong, otherwise we could have asked for those things at the workshop. And, and known that, that I don't think we should hold this up for that, but that's just my opinion. I'm one person on the board. Mike, I didn't get your clear opinion. If you had a vote tonight, which way you would go?
I hadn't offered it, um.
I didn't think so.
I, I would, I, I would, um. N- not be in favor of closing that.
Mr. Huber?
Uh, I wouldn't hold it up for that. I, I agree that the circulation's a little less than ideal, but I don't think that it's something that should hold up the project.
I'd say the same.
Mr. Palermo?
I'm agreeing.
So Alan, I, I think it was a very valid.
I'm not going to hold up the project for that.
Okay.
Um, what I'm saying is it's going to offer a solution that you guys wish you would have taken. And then I'll have to call the police, you know, that there's a traffic enforcement issue again.
All right, so let me just go over the conditions that I do have. Um, you want the, I've got to be specific here. Which lights reduced to the four thousand Kelvin?
Any light that was listed at seventy-one, any light on the property should be at four thousand or less Kelvin.
And then I don't know where it's written or if you have it on here, but the lights off one hour before and the lights. Two hours after, was that, should I, do I need to list that as a condition?
Yes.
Okay. Then for the dumpster, you want split face concrete block?
Yes, please.
The monument sign will need to come back before the board. Question for everybody on that, since they drew it on the, the plans where it is, when they come back, do we still get to move it if we don't like where it is? Or do we have to be specific to that? I'm just asking.
Um, so the, a proof site plan, if it indicates or provides a location, you'd be approving that as well. So if you're not sure that you like it or you don't want to talk about it, you can condition that the pylon or the freestanding sign come back separately. Including its final location.
Okay, that's why I'm saying, how do I say it properly?
I would just say, condition that the, that the freestanding sign shown on the plan is not included in the approval. It's easier just to take it out than to reference, so.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
And then, uh, Ballards will be in the rear parking lot on the far northern end. Do I need to specify that any different?
No, you can say that and staff will review when, when the revised site plan is submitted, will ensure that that element's on the plan. And we'll have our engineered review just to make sure that the spacing is appropriate to achieve the desired effect to prevent vehicular traffic from exiting the site inadvertently over hill.
Okay. Did I miss any conditions?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
They now need a do not turn right sign at the northern stop sign, stop bar. They also need a wrong way or do not enter.
Northern stop up here?
Yep.
Yeah.
So they can't turn on a wrong way.
Then at some place, there should be a wrong way or do not enter sign that is facing that.
Help me, Alan, say that again.
It should be facing north, a do not enter a wrong way sign on the one-way drive.
Okay.
As far as the location, I mean, you can give some discretion, but somewhere on the, um, along the sidewalk, you know, the sidewalk area. On the west side of the building, you would need that, that's the location of where you'd be putting it or would you want it on the others?
That's what I was trying to understand.
On the other side.
You'd want it on the driver's side, whatever.
Right near the north bull nose of this landscaped island.
Yeah.
On the driver's side.
Well, you can indicate on, on the, on the.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would enter.
It's the, it's the direct people exiting here, so.
But if they do make their turn.
The north end, that's where they're going to see it.
So help me with the.
The northeast corner.
Thank you.
How about that?
That's what I was looking for.
Okay.
For the purpose of the record, would you mind if we said the, um, the sidewalk east of the drive aisle, the entrance drive aisle? Cause then that's very clear of where, which sidewalk section it's going to.
Actually, it's a, this part of it's just landscaping.
Oh, is it landscaping?
Landscaping, yeah.
Okay.
The sign wouldn't, wouldn't affect the landscaping.
Okay.
Okay.
So on the.
Do not enter sign.
Yes.
Where?
Um, now I don't know how to say this, um, so now on the landscaped. Area on the east side of the entrance drive aisle.
That was very good.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm talking like a robot. I apologize. I can't think and talk at the same time.
Oh, I appreciated it, so that's okay. All right. So do not enter sign on landscaped area of east side entrance aisle, correct? Somebody, was that a ring of approval?
It's somewhere under here.
Come in. Eddie Moore. Okay, since I wrote all these, I'm going to make the motion. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, do we have to do seeker first? Would somebody like to?
And you should have, um, the seeker was provided to you part two and part three, not maybe at the, the last meeting.
I'm not going far away.
Gary, could you just go over it real quick for us?
I, I certainly can.
Yeah.
So in looking at the, um. Oh, what's the size of this one? Did we determine that it's type two because of the size?
Do, didn't just. I believe the applicant mentioned that there were area variances for this one.
Yeah, there were, and I believe actually now that memory serves, I prepared a part two and part three. However, based on the size of the building, it's under four thousand square feet and it's permitted in the zone, zoning district. And so therefore it's a type two now under the current regulations. So I had provided it to you out of habit. However, um, be- because of the change to the seeker law, um, this is now classified as a type two action. And doesn't require any further seeker, so you can just acknowledge the type two designation. But if it makes everybody feel better, this would have been a recommended, recommended as a negative declaration, had it been an unlisted action.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to make a motion in regards to, um, I can just call out the case now, right? Case number PV one nine zero five dash one. I recommend approval with the following conditions. Any light on the property should be at 4,000 Kelvin or less. Lights will be off one hour before opening and two hours after they will be off. Dumpster to have split-face concrete block. The monument sign was not included in the approval. Ballards in the rear parking lot on the far northern end. Do not turn at the northern stop bar, do not turn right at the northern stop bar.
Would it be a do not enter?
Do not enter.
No, do not turn right.
We want both signs.
Both signs.
Yeah, there's two. Do not turn, so the one coming from Portland, you want a do not turn right at the northern stop bar there.
It will be at the, it'll be facing west.
Correct.
But, right.
There are two new signs that were being proposed, I thought, from the conditions.
Yeah, and then the next one is, do not, do not enter sign on the landscaped area of east side entrance light.
In case they accidentally disregard the first sign.
So I need a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
All those in approval, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, and one absent. With that, we got through this. Thank you for doing business in Arandaque, and much success with the property. Thank you.
No. Public input was closed at the last meeting.
Closed last meeting.
Are you going home now, then?
I'm glad there's so many people checking. Thanks, everyone. Hold on one second, you're, you're all set, thank you very much. Good luck.
God, he waited all this time for public input, huh?
No.
Oh, no, the other guy.
Oh, these aren't, these are updated? Well, hold on a second, before we do the minutes, we have the other referral. Thank you. Throw me all off here.
Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next item for board action is a town board referral upon the matter of request by Vermin Associates acting as agent for Rochester Management Inc. for rezoning approval to rezone two parcels of land located at 2590 and 2662 Culver Road, the Wambach property, from R1 residential to mixed-use commercial.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I am going to recuse myself from this case, on referral, referral, not a case, referral.
Thank you.
Chairman, would you like me to provide a overview of what's before you?
No, that's okay.
Yes, please.
So, this application is being taken up, um, by the town board to rezone the parcel, parcels of land that you might all know as Wambach's or the Wambach property. The application came forward, um, Rochester Management came forward with the request for the rezone to accommodate a senior housing development on the east port, eastern portion of the property. However, the town board and specifically supervisor did not want to, uh, rezone just a piece of that parcel, they wanted to have a more comprehensive and, um, consistent rezoning, and so suggested when they did make application, that they rezone the entire parcel to mixed-use commercial, um, given its location on a major corridor, um, and the fact that that land use category or that zoning category could accommodate what was being proposed as far as the multifamily, uh, development, and then also allow for future, um, redevelopment of the parcel, whatever that may be, um, in a way that would require, um, careful review by this board. And so with this particular, you, this'll be coming to you next month as a site plan approval. The, um, but tonight, your task is to comment on the, the zoning aspect of the rezone, provide guidance to the town board.
So a positive or a negative?
Correct.
Okay.
And if there's any detail that you wanna share with that referral, you certainly, things that you'd like the town board to consider, to think about, that are specific to the zoning request. Things that are site plan related, you'll be discussing and talking about yourselves at next month's meeting. And just so, to be clear, this'll be subject to a public hearing at the town board's July 16th meeting. This'll come to you at your meeting, um, I wish I had the date at the ready, but I don't, um, I do apologize, I'll grab that.
Twenty-second or something like that, twenty, yeah, twenty-second sounds right.
So I guess, um, just a little bit more detail, so this is around rezoning, the whole thing is mixed-use commercial?
Correct.
Does that mean we don't care where, right now, where they're putting the housing development?
Well, the housing development, they do have a location specified, I think on the plans that were submitted with this rezoning application, you can see where that is. So, but your main priority is to comment on the rezone application, so-
We're not approving anything else at this point.
You're, yeah, you're not approving anything, you're actually just providing a referral. Um, then, when the time comes, um, just so you know, the, the meeting for the site plan review of the specific project that's being advanced will initiate with the, with the, uh, planning board next month, but you won't be rendering a decision until the town board's taken up the, the rezone, but they're starting the review.
So can I ask you another question? So when you're looking at the map, cause I drove around trying to understand, how many different entrances? It looks like there's more here than I found. How many different ways can you get into that property?
Um, so the-
Not right now, but I mean in the future.
At, again, that's not subject, that's not something that you're thinking about right now, because you're, again, you're talking about the rezoning uh, to mixed-use commercial with the understanding that there's a redevelopment proposed. So, um, but the, the site plan, and I think that it was shown in the concept in your packet, shows a connection to Hulda.
Which, oh, okay, which is off to the side there, not the back, not the back of the property.
No.
The only reason I was thinking positive or negative was, I only thought there was two, but now it looks like there's actually three, if I'm reading this right, is there one back here?
No, there's, there's not one, if you look at the site plan that was included with the packet, uh, I believe it shows Hulda as the only secondary means of access to that parcel.
So there won't be any entrance off of Carlson?
Not to my naught, that, that's not what's being advanced as part of the site plan.
I, I mean, I just, it's just information, that's all.
Right.
I thought the more you could get there, the better, but-
No, I think the, it's under review by the town engineer, the fire marshal's office, um, DPW, so if there's any requests or issues that they raise, through those reviews and certainly through your site plan review, that would be something that you would discuss potentially, but for the rezoning, it's just the, um, and it's also gonna be reviewed by Monroe County as well.
And Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, but in making a recommendation on the rezoning, the board should consider any, any use that would be permitted in this district, because this project may be proposed, but once it's rezoned, they could, they can do anything at that point.
Right, so the, the way we'll handle, and that's a great, great point, when, um, for the environmental review associated with the rezoning, it will look at the, the specifics of the proposed project that's before, that's coming before the town or, or that's prompting the rezone request. But it's also gonna contemplate potential build-out of, under just the general mixed-use commercial district zoning language, so that if, what would be the potential impacts if the property were just developed. So we look at the, the specific, but also the more broad, so that you're not, that you're looking at the potential comprehensive impacts of a zoning change of this nature. And that will be explored through this, the secret process.
So I'm just trying to think, if we give a positive referral, what are some of the positive things we could give besides, it's a great idea?
Well-
Can I just add one more thing, then? The, the primary consideration in a rezoning is whether the proposed designation is consistent or advances the comprehensive plan. So that, that should really be your main, um, your main consideration. How does this fit in with the, with the comprehensive plan?
Can I, that, to that point, can I ask what it currently is zoned and what the future use is designated?
R1, is it not?
So the current zoning is R1 of the parcel, the parcels, excuse me. The Wambach's property is zoned R1, and the request for the rezoning is to mixed-use commercial.
Right, what's the comprehensive plan say?
So the comprehensive plan, the, this change is certainly supported by the comprehensive plan in a couple of, couple of ways. One is, um, senior housing was identified as a specific need, um, and need to advance, um, additional senior housing in the, in the town. Um, it also addresses the very specific request for expanding mixed-use development within the town, that was called out as a specific, um, goal or objective. And then also adding to or expanding potential housing types, so that, um, I think those three elements are called out very specifically in the comprehensive plan, and this project is supportive of that.
Is, is this land, um, in the comprehensive plan foreseen to do, um, fulfill those needs? When the comprehensive plan was done in 2014, was this land designated that way?
I don't think that this, the, so the comprehensive plan didn't have any, I, very, very, in very limited ways, they didn't have, um, parcel-specific recommendations, so this parcel wasn't looked at, um, in isolation, in other words.
When I'm looking at the map and it's telling me it is comprehensive plan shaded yellow for residential, would that be not correct then?
Right, so the, the, the mixed-use commercial allows residential development, so that's why I think that at the time the comprehensive plan was done, it didn't, it didn't identify future locations where the expansion or change in development type might occur.
Cause it did list, um, future expansion of the MUC actually across the street on Culver Road, where we, um, voted to recommend that to the town board
Yeah.
for zoning change. Is there any, um, subdivision, um, Capri?
There, so there wouldn't be, so, be, um, once the parcel is rezoned to mixed-use commercial, any subdivision of land actually becomes an administrative review and doesn't need to come to this board. So that's why you would be approving site plan, but not the subdivision of land associated with creating that new separate parcel. In our, in our code, residential subdivisions come to the town board, so not, not commercial ones.
So what you're saying then is that, um, if we give the okay for, uh, for a MUC, that, um, the front part of that piece of property can be business?
It, anything that's allowed in the mixed-use commercial could be potentially-
Business, it could be a bar, it could be-
Could be, well, there are certain things in, mixed-use commercial has some limitations or things that require special use permits, similar to other districts like the commercial and, um, manufacturing districts. Um, there are certain things that are allowed by right. However, anything that's coming before the board and any other portion in the future would be subject to this board's, um, approval as far as site layout and, to, um, site layout, potential uses would have to be conforming, or they have to seek either special use permit, um, or a variance, a use variance if they, somebody was trying to proceed with something that was not allowed by, by right or by special use permit under the mixed-use commercial.
I, I just, I, I think I have this sensitivity to, uh, a senior citizen dwelling and then not knowing what's gonna be up front about it. You know, on the west side. We'll wait and see.
So we, we don't have any known, um, development at this time, so the, the, the development that's being proposed is the senior development. Um, so we don't have any information about what could be happening, um, in the future on the remainder of the site.
Would we have the prerogative to say that, uh, pick the amount of site that you want for the senior citizen housing and leave the rest as it, as it is?
That wasn't the town board's preference, they wanted to be comprehensive in their, um, rezoning so that it wasn't piecemealed. Um, and so that the entire site shares the same, um, zoning, and also the potential for, um, the, the design elements of the mixed-use commercial. The town board and particularly the supervisor felt like that was the best match and would allow for the best redevelopment potential, allow the most control, but also the, the most flexibility with respect to redevelopment.
So, the MUC, um, has square footage limitations on it, does it not?
It does, they'll be seeking, they, they made that, knowing they're gonna seek, uh, variance. Um, there are, and, and that was a, yeah, that was, that was, they're, they're aware of that, and the, the town is aware of it, I think they're, um, the, that's the, the one potential limitation for the mixed-use commercial, but however, it's the, there's a, unfortunately, the mixed-use code doesn't differentiate between the uses with that limitation, and it didn't, I don't know that they, in setting that limit, were, might've been thinking of retail only, but did not specify that in the language.
The, um-
Because there's no housing project, multifamily housing project, that could be 8,000 square feet, and makes sense.
The mixed-use commercial also doesn't, it says that it could be any one of these things, but it also doesn't say that it has to be a combination, right, so like, when we see mixed-use, we generally think of a combination type, retail and living and, you know, mixed. But it's my understanding that it could just be any one of many of these things that are on the list, correct? So it could just be all residential even though it's MUC?
Poten- potentially, I don't know if, um, how's, I, I don't know, that's a difficult thing to answer, so at this point, it's any one of those uses, if it doesn't specify, like, to your point, doesn't say that you have to have a mix, i-in any building, you have to, there's gotta be, um, if you have multiple tenants, I think in this instance, there, there wouldn't be a requirement.
Right, 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 right.
Right.
So just two other questions to Bradley's point then, so this could be all someday, all senior citizen, citizen housing or a mixture of living, housing?
Speculative, no way to answer that question, because
I got it.
We, I don't know what's gonna come, that's gonna be a decision that, you know, with the, if, if and when the rezoning takes place, then it would be a matter of what could happen.
So they said this is gonna be three stories. And if I recall, the other senior housing on Culver, it was three stories and that caused some concerns.
In this particular case, the, um, local, the, the responding fire district has been notified and I believe has reviewed with the fire marshal, the proposed general plans, that, being that they're at the early stage, this is not, it's not construction drawings, but it's a site plan and general information, so I believe that that review is taking place now, and so any comments can be, would be addressed and provided to the planning board in advance of the site plan.
Okay. Three stories, 10 feet from Culver.
And again, some of these questions are getting down to the site plan issues, and we have to make sure that we're focused on the rezone at this stage.
Okay, so my question's probably too many, but go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I, obviously, I assume the board would take the lead on seeker?
Um, I think this is actually an unlisted action, so each board can actually just do its own seeker, and we won't, don't have to, we're not obligated to do, um, a coordinator review, and I think just to, because of the back and forth and the timing of things, it's easier for each board just to render their own decision.
I'm okay.
I'm not.
Comments, if you don't like it?
I, I love the idea that something wants to go in there. I'm not crazy about rezoning the entire parcel for one project at this moment. Um, especially when I can get a gas station put in there as right, and there's not a whole lot we can do to stop it.
No gas stations in the MUC, I don't think, but I-
Yeah, there are, service stations are allowed, it's allowed in the MUC.
It's a special, I think, I believe it's a special permit.
That could be.
So the other thing to-
I'm just saying that for me, I believe that there are other pieces and nobody's asking me to do this. Um, other sections of the code that can handle what is being proposed there without changing the whole parcel to MUC, so I'm not, I'm not comfortable with all of this yet. So I've said my piece on that.
Yeah, so I, I hear your points, I, I just think more mixed-use commercial is best, especially for senior citizens, cause, well, we can't say what it's gonna be, but I'm thinking-
Well, the market's gonna tell us what it's gonna be, we're not gonna tell it what it's gonna be.
But I'm just thinking, you know, seniors that can get the things that they need all in one place, restaurants, food.
Well, remember that-
That's what it's gonna be, though, so.
Right. So I, I also am not terribly keen on the idea, um, for a couple of reasons. When I look at the ma- uh, master plan- When I look at the ma- uh, master plan map on four zero, that area is not designated as something that would possibly be muck, contemplated as muck in the future, although there are expansions to the existing muck area. Um, the second reason that I'm not, I'm not in love with the idea is that there is a certain section in here where it calls out the need for senior housing. But it does say that future senior housing development should improve char- community character and maintain the current scale of the town's existing development patterns. So when I look at the area over there, I notice that it's surrounded by R one. So I might be more interested in, in some number of R zoning, but not necessarily the mixed use commercial because it's not, it's a little further away than R one than in, than another R is. Um, and the, I think that what might be a good idea is rezoning the front end of this to maybe mixed use commercial. But the second parcel in the back, I think should be some type of residential, but that's just what I think. Uh, especially since the real access to that parcel is off of a neighborhood street, not unlikely to be off of Culver Road.
That's what I was asking, how many entrances and exits there are?
It's so deep.
Well, that's interesting. Okay, any other comments or? I'm, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the open-endedness of the entire property being muck. Uh, I just, it, it just seems to leave the door open for, I don't know. I'm, I'm just thinking the kinds of things up front that I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for a, and I, I, I wish I could tell you what are, what are not permitted, but I just, just not comfy. What did you think of, well, they're not asking us for Bradley's proposal, right? No, they're not. So.
So they're, they're, the board is, seeks the planning board's referral, um, for as-
They can still do whatever they want, right?
The town board has discretion, correct? So they'll, but they, similar to all the input that they receive, all of that will be factored in.
So we could give those recommendations?
Um-
Like, let's say this comes out to be a negative referral, but I heard something I liked, which was, but we think the front should be mixed use commercial. Is that something we can feedback?
It'd be open and I mean, that's, if you guys wanna talk about that, that'd be something that, you know, I could think about. I haven't thought deeply about it.
We're being asked one question here, we're not being asked several questions. So I think we just need to answer one question.
You can provide your, the basis for your decision, one way or the other. And if you wanna reference concerns or things that, that's certainly this board's prerogative. And, uh, Brad, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna make one comment. Just at the time the comprehensive plan was created, no one had thought, everybody looked at mixed use commercial as the only place that it could happen was in Titus Cooper Hudson. Um, there's nothing to require that and so that's why the horizon has been broadened cause it's a progressive district in a code that hasn't been updated in quite a few times.
I agree, it's, it's our most progressive district, it has the most amount of restrictions. The same time though, it leaves the door very broadly and wide open to residential or commercial or versus, uh, more specific zoning. Um, I mean, even R four or R five really permits quite a bit there. So it's not to say that that excludes like large development, but at least it would be, at least we know it would be residential.
What do you wanna do with this, Mr. Chair? I think you've heard us.
I'm looking for a recommendation. I mean, I'm just very pro mixed use commercial, so I'm kinda-
Me too, me too. I just don't feel like this, it's not, well, the last time we looked at this and there was some, you know, and I was on the other side of the fence. Mostly because what made that different to me was that it was in a, a node in the neighborhood. It was at a, it was on a, it was on Culver Road and it was on an intersection and it was, it was there. This parcel, while the front end of it is on, um, is on Culver, the parcel goes so deep back and the back end of this parcel is completely surrounded by R, R one. That's what makes it a little bit different to me in my mind.
This parcel is R one.
Are you looking for somebody to make a motion or do you wanna still discuss it more?
Oh, no, I, I was just sharing how I felt. I, I'm very much for a mixed use commercial. I think I, I don't know any, many other areas we can do it in, so that's why I was very pro. But I'll take a recommendation from the board.
I'll go ahead and move that, uh, upon the matter of request by Bergman and associate asking as agent for Rochester Management Inc. For rezoning approval from rezoning two parcels of land located in two five nine zero and two six six two Culver Road. Wambach property from R one to muck, mixed use commercial, that this board make a recommendation to the town board that, um, we are declaring a negative recommendation.
Do we need to give refunds?
If we have to give them for positive, I think for the negative too.
You should provide some basis for the decision.
And the basis for the decision is that, and I'm gonna let everybody come in to amend this as they see fit this motion. Um, for me, it's that I would prefer to see the parcel split subdivided before it came back to us for this. Obviously, the town board is much wiser than we are on this and will make a, a determinant on that. But without knowing what the full property is going to, um, look like, I think it's a reach to say the entire property can now have all these benefits that go along with it as right, without us having a better idea.
So I think you're saying that, uh, the muck is too, um, broad for the location of this property. So there's too, too many, um, possibilities considering the, um, location and what it's in, what it's adjacent to. And then I think number two might be that, um, it is inconsistent with the surrounding zoning. Number three, no, it's my understanding that it's already subdivided. Is that correct?
No, the, the, it's, it's currently two parcels. Uh, the portion that would be for, that Rochester Management is advancing would actually create a separate parcel.
Okay.
Um, for their piece.
So I see what you're saying.
Yes.
The first bit, yeah. Um, and that it's-
So hold on, so what about the partial split would be preferred? You didn't want that in there?
Um, would that be something we can talk about now or is that not, we're only talking about the zoning, right? So we can't really talk about the site plan, so.
Well, we do know currently the project as presented to us as a, a theoretical project would also need variances just to get off the ground.
Yeah, um, can we talk about that? Can we say, yeah, so it would need significant variances. Or I think the most that you can have in a muck is like fifteen thousand square feet and this is eighty?
Eighty thousand.
It's a big variance.
So I got, the muck is too broad for this location, inconsistent with surrounding area, would require significant variances?
For this particular project. And that, perhaps a residential, uh, another form of residential might be more appropriate. At least for the back, for the back piece.
So another form of residential for proposed project?
Would be the suggestion, I guess, at least, at least for the rear.
So I don't know if we've ever had this before. I don't think we've always all agreed for positive or negatives, it doesn't matter, right? We just take a vote?
Yes, you can just take the vote.
So I'm not gonna contest any of these, I think they're all valid, but I just really am a proponent for mixed use commercial and I don't see many other areas we can do it. It's the only reason I'm not agreeing with the board.
I, I don't disagree with you. I think perhaps the front piece, you know-
Well, I like that, but you said I couldn't propose that.
Oh, I don't know, can we? Like, I, I, I mean, if, I, I, that's something that I'd be willing-
That's why I said, if they would split the property, split the baby before it comes back to us, I would be happy to reconsider that.
I would love to put that in there, but I thought we couldn't.
But just to be, to clarify, the application comes to the town board. So if the, 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 and the applicant has indicated the plan to split the parcel and located where that is going to take place, the order of operation-
Nope, I get it.
So it depends on, that, that split won't happen unless the rezone takes place. So it's chicken and egg, um, at this point.
So explain that, I'm sorry.
If they don't, if the rezoning application is successful, then they're going to split the lot. But at that point, it would, depending on what the zoning is-
We've already rezoned the entire parcel, so.
Well, it depends on what the, yeah, what the zoning is. So if, right now, if they were to split the lot and make application to split the lot, it would be subject to this board's review because it's in R, in an R one, uh, district. If, um, this underlying zoning changes to something else, then we have to look to see what those requirements are for subdivision review and what board or whether it does get, happens administratively, so.
So now you're making me wanna vote with the board, um, by, by explaining that, yeah, sure. You know, the only, the only other muck that we have is right down the road here. Is that correct?
Nope, there's a-
No, there's another one on Culver, right across from the church.
Correct. So the mixed use commercial-
Right now, I mean-
That corner, right across from the church of the old convent.
Michael wasn't at that meeting.
Yeah, so there's a, a parcel on Culver Road that was, uh, rezoned, um, to the mixed use commercial to, to allow for adaptive reuse of an existing building. Um, and so I think historically, the mixed use commercial zoning district was developed with Titus Cooper Hudson in mind specifically. And no thought had ever been really about applying it elsewhere in places where it would make sense. And our code, our comprehensive plan indicates that zoning should be updated to allow for more mixed use commercial. Um, we have a code, a district that allows it, and so now we've just been applying it in other places.
We've had nothing this size.
There's, we have to remember in the town of Aronique, there's, there are very few large, uh, parcels or tracts of undeveloped land.
But we still have had nothing this size in a muck.
We, we have nothing this size, period.
And, and when we looked at the Titus area, before, uh, uh, shovel was dug, we, we looked at the entire plan, even though it was a pie in the sky thing, we saw the entire thing. Did we not have everything on a piece of paper before? Yeah, but it never, it didn't look like that at the end.
That's a theoretical plan, but yeah.
Yeah, we had a theoretical plan. We had, we, we had what the pieces might be, even though we know in hindsight that that didn't happen exactly like we planned, but we had it there and we don't have that here.
But unlike in, just with any other kind of zoning, you don't have anything until you do. Um, so there are plenty of places that have no development, have underlying zoning, nothing's physically happened there yet. That's the purpose of zoning, cause it provides a framework for what can and can't happen in a place. So you don't necessarily have to have the whole plan figured out to know what the, if the zoning is applied, that helps to provide a framework for what can and can't happen.
But I get what Michael's saying, there was sort of a direction as to where we were going before. And at this moment, we're not seeing a total direction on the entire parcel.
In other towns, there are large swaths of land located in a mixed use commercial district in other suburban towns.
I also think we're getting in the weeds here.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just as a point of clarification, there are other places where large swaths of land exist in a mixed use commercial district that was newly created and hasn't been built out yet. And there was no specific plan, it was just identifying the types of development that could happen, what the physical layout might need to look like and the amenities that would be provided or needed. Our mixed use commercial has those same parameters and so that's why the town board made the decision to, and it was the town board advising the applicant of what, when, when they were coming forward with the rezone, it was the, the town specifying as a recommendation, the mixed use commercial, um, as an avenue.
I have a question, um, uh, in the code, when it looks at the mixed use commercial guidelines, there's some general guidelines and then there's a few references for the design guidelines for that area. Now, I know that we have design guidelines that are specifically written for, um, Cooper, Titus, Hudson. And we use those many times when we're looking at site plan. Now, when we make a new muck, it would be my understanding that those design guidelines are specific to that area cause they're titled Cooper, Cooper, Hudson.
So this is one thing that we are looking at, um, how to update the code language so that we can address that. The comprehensive plan contains a community design section that talks about mixed use and provides a framework that this board could point to for, um, a rationale for design preferences or guidance given to applicants under mixed use commercial that's outside of the Cooper, Titus, Hudson area. So there's a framework that could be used, um, that's a legal basis or framework. But the plan would be to, recognizing that the, that this zoning district could or may make sense to be applied elsewhere. I know that one of the things I'll be, I'm looking at right now is mo- potential modifications maybe that the town board might wanna consider at some point.
I'd worry about changing another area to muck without having those guidelines in place immediately because we already know that we have people ready to do something and then we change it. But then we don't have specific guidelines for that area to reference when we do the site plan review. I'd almost rather see, we're gonna, we wanna change this to muck and here are the design guidelines that we want to move forward with in conjunction so that when we are doing site plan review, we have those guidelines to rely on that are specific to that. You know what I'm saying? That parcel or that group of parcels.
Michael asked a good question. Can we table this or not?
Um, you know what, you actually can table it, um, because the board won't be acting until their August meeting. And so it might be beneficial, um, to table only because you're missing, we have, um, uh, our alternate's not here and also one of our board members is not here. So it might, it might be worth continuing the conversation when there's a full.
I would like to recommend we table it only because-
Well, there's a motion sitting on the floor at this moment.
Well, okay, so we have a motion? Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Was there a second?
No.
Does it die because of a, lack of a second?
Well, we haven't called for a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so now there's a motion and a second. We'll vote, so. Wait, how do, how do I vote if I wanna just abstain? You can abstain. But I mean, if I wanted to postpone or if I want a table or how do I do that?
Vote to deny the motion.
Or you can abstain, right?
Sure.
But, but that won't, you have to deny the motion in order to be able to bring up a new motion, correct? If you wanna try to, if you wanna take a vote to-
Yeah, that's why I said you could vote to deny the motion, turn, vote, vote it down.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a roll call.
What is this vote?
This is for a negative referral, the mixed use commercial is too broad, these are the condit- these are the recommendations. The, or I'm sorry, this is, the, not the conditions, the suggestions. Mixed use commercial is too broad for this location, inconsistent with the surrounding area, significant variances would be required for the project proposed, another form of residential for proposed rear project. Did I say that right?
I understand.
Residential.
I have perhaps another form of residential zoning would be recommended for this parcel.
I, I thought I was missing a word, thank you.
You might wanna put that there's a possibility that we could, that it could be-
You wanna amend the motion? I'm sorry.
No, I, I don't know, I'm just talking this out with you, that it, the front part could be some, that there could be two, um, two, you know, I don't, never mind.
No, we could, cause-
No, I'm-
If he says yes, we could amend it, so.
Uh-
No, and I, that's what I've asked for, it's not in there, but I would like to see this come back with a, with the parcel split.
With the muck in the front and some form of residential in there.
With a better idea of what we're looking at.
So to you, what you guys wanna add to the-
With better idea of the residential portion and the muck portion.
Well, consider a combination of muck and residential. Consider a combination of Muck and residential zoning.
Okay, so I'm going to do a roll call just to make sure we get this right. Mr. Huber.
Before you do that.
Oh, yes.
I'm not really sure what I need to say to table this for.
That would be a motion, but we have another motion in front of us.
Okay.
So, but to answer Michael's question, if you want to be able to table this, your vote would be.
It has to be with the majority.
No, yes, I'm saying if you want to have an opportunity to present another motion to table the application, your vote would have to be to deny the current vote on the, or motion on the table.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to clarify.
Thank you for your help. Mr. Huber.
So, hold on.
Oh, okay.
I would like to entertain Mr. Palermo's motion to table, if there's a way to do that.
Well, you just seconded.
All right, fine, okay.
So we have to vote it down at this point.
Can I just throw this in there? I think you made a good point. If the board votes on this, on this motion, and it fails, is the board able then to still consider the recommendation? Or how do we typically handle that?
Well, how do we, can we, is there a simple way to just withdraw the motion? And that's been made on the file, this is my first experience with this in my five years on TV.
In the time I've been on the board, there's been times when it's failed and somebody else has made a different motion. I can recall that happening.
Yeah, I'm actually not aware of any statutes that require like these motions, and that these are really just rules that help clarify what the board is doing. So I thought it was a fair point, so I wanted to raise it before everyone voted. But, you know, I guess now, having reconsidered, if the motion fails, you haven't done anything. The board hasn't acted, so you can still act on the recommendation.
However, we can also withdraw it if Mr. Richards would like to, or the second would like to.
Second first.
Well, the second can't actually technically withdraw a motion, only.
I think the second needs to withdraw, I'll hear second first.
Would you like to withdraw your motion or keep it?
If that would please the board, I will withdraw the motion.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Palermo to table this till our next meeting. Oh, sorry. We don't have to vote then, if there's no motion.
Do we have to give a reason for tabling it?
There's no, if he withdraws it, there's no motion to vote.
You don't need to provide a rationale for tabling, you can just.
I do think that the board should be aware, though, that we do have these concerns. And it's not going to look any better next month if that's still the same thing.
So just so you know, the town board isn't going to render any decision at its July 16th meeting. They would be waiting until the regular town board meeting on August. And I'm sure that our town board members typically or very often will watch the proceedings for planning board and zoning board just out of interest, and I'm sure.
Well, I was going to ask you, if we tabled it, could we ask that the concerns, I mean, the board's concerned. I think these are very valid things that the board should hear.
So absolutely, and we're happy to relay, and I'll certainly advise the town board members to take a look at tonight's meeting so they can hear and see the conversation that took place, even though this was tabled.
Can the town board act without a recommendation from the planning board?
So the town board won't be acting because our policy is they do not make a decision on, for a rezone the same night as a public hearing, just to allow for full and complete consideration of all the testimony provided. Only on very rare occasions is a change in a local law adopted the same, or any change in zoning adopted on the same meeting, and very rare, maybe non-existent. So that won't be changed with this particular application, so would not be happening. And the earliest and soonest the town board would take up an action related to the rezone application would be at its August meeting.
At the same time, it is only a recommendation. They can do whatever they want.
Right.
And they asked us, and this is what we thought, and they can be, right?
Right, but I mean, the board, we're all struggling here to positive or negative, so.
Well, I mean, I'm.
I'm not struggling at all.
I just want to make sure that that's.
As far as the whole parcel goes, and this is the question I proposed today, I have no problem with my decision. If I had another question to be answered, I might give another answer to that, but this is the only question that's in front of me right now.
I mean, I would have no problem if we could have that discussion of the front mixed-use commercial, the rear residential. But right from the beginning, we couldn't do that, because that's not what was asked, right?
Right.
We give them a recommendation for that instead of just a negative, we could give.
So I asked from the very beginning.
Well, it would be a negative declaration on this question with those as the reasons.
It can be a positive declaration with.
No, because a positive declaration means that you.
You agree with what you.
Agree with.
I'm just going to ask, positive referral or negative referral, because otherwise declaration sounds an awful lot like seeker, so. No, that's okay.
I think it would be a good idea for us to sit back for a couple of weeks and take another look at this in a workshop forum.
At the time, I'd like to think about it.
And it might give staff another chance to take a look at this and talk to the developer also.
Well, when it comes to town board, that'll be a public hearing, right?
It will be a public hearing, correct?
Are we allowed to take that input, or is it only for town board?
So certainly, you'll have access to it, but it shouldn't weigh in because this is a town board item for action. Otherwise, if that were the case, there would be a public hearing at this stage here, too. This is just your board's, now what informs your decision as individual board member is up to each and every one of you individually. So that's certainly.
So as individuals, we could watch the tape and see.
However, so we could table this, and then at the next meeting, we may have a full board with the alternative and Mr. Reed back, right? So we could then just get more opinions into this and maybe come up with a positive or negative, and we have time.
Sure, yeah, so if you table it and you'll come back, you'll have potentially a full, and we'll double check the requirements as to whether or not, because Mr. Evelyn has recused himself if the alternate, if Jack can step in for one item, or if that's not appropriate, we'll figure that out in the interim.
Sorry?
Would the workshop not be the vehicle whereby we could just hash this out? I mean, is that?
I think we provide ourselves that opportunity by tabling it, because I'm hearing we have time.
Yes, you have time.
So I think it's worth it, the conversation, because I think it was a very good conversation, so.
Something also to consider is that we're actually only missing one person because.
He recused.
Right.
I'm sorry.
So.
Is an abstention, no matter what we vote right now, that's how he's going to be recorded. He's abstained from this.
But your question, Carrie, was whether you could have an alternate member in for the member that abstained for the conflict. That was your question?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, actually, that won't even be an issue because I believe it will have, she'll be filling in for someone else already anyway, so I apologize. Yeah, I'm sorry, okay, so either way, I mean, honestly, you can do the vote tonight, or you can.
If that's the preference of the board, then that's fine with me, I don't know whether it's going to change anything.
Right, do you have a second on your?
It actually may change me to what you guys are bringing up, so. I'm sorry?
You started a motion, did you complete it?
My motion is I recommend that we table this until our workshop in next meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries with one abstention. One absent and one abstention. Okay, we have minutes, does anybody get a chance to review these? To be honest, I did not.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that with the amendments, that we adapt the April minutes. Let Mike stay out there, he's a pain.
He's usually got good input for this, though.
Was he sleeping?
Didn't miss me, did you? Were you gone?
There's a motion on the table to accept the minutes from April as amended.
I'll second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I abstain.
It's okay. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from May 20th meeting as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second again.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstains? They both pass. With that, I'd like to do a meeting adjourned. Thank you.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Oronaqua Planning Board on ICAT Government Access.